That one is.
I have nine o'clock. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting in order to start with Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, good morning.
Good morning.
Next I have is the approval of today's agenda.
Make a motion to approve today's agenda.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Ask for the approval of the minutes.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes from March 4th, 2020 as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next is approval of claims for 3/11/2020.
Make a motion to approve the claims for payment for March 11th, 2020.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now I have three utility permits.
Okay. I'd make a motion to approve utility permits 20-007, 008, and 009.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Secondary roads.
Getting ready to haul rock. We haven't put any on the road. We are currently on rainy days. We'll move the rock to our spots that are furthest away from the quarry to try to help things go quicker this summer. Then every night they come back and they load up the truck with sand just in case, so. It's just that time of year. Yep, we don't know what season it is. But that's pretty much what they're doing day to day.
Okay. I have, check. Make sure I got to 9:02. It's 9:02. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing for the road vacation of Lawn Hill. You wanna talk about it?
Sure. So, we had a request to vacate and deed out a lot of Lawn Hill from Linda Hayes. And they own 90% of Lawn Hill probably. So, everything's been vacated except for these two remaining parts. So, you know, our process is we need to continue to vacate those two and then deed them all out. And then we're doing that in the future, the actual deeding, Joe?
Yep.
Okay. So, I received one comment from Rick Vaughn this morning, so I told him to just type me an email. So, you know, he's in charge of IAS, which would be north of that northernmost red part that's getting vacated. So, his only request is that, you know, they get half of the property. You know, he says things are fine now the way they're working, but you never know, 20 years from now, different owner. So, he'd like when we deed it out to, that IAS gets half of that old Superior Street right away.
They, do they currently have half of what's running east, south of there, I mean that?
So, in the aerial underneath the red part, you'd maybe be able to see like there's, there's some driving that happens there. Once you get past that, it, it looks like it's all farmed.
Okay.
But yeah, so you, so you can tell they are kinda driving on that north half of Superior Street right now.
Dave and-
So Lawn Hill does not own any of this currently, but they want half of this. IAS.
Yes, correct. Yep, and it's an old city, so nobody actually owns it.
Okay.
So, we, we own it.
Okay.
I got Dave and Linda here. David'd like to speak. Come on up, Dave.
Good morning.
Howdy. Uh, I'm not positive on this. The red is an old railroad line. When deed, way we understood, umpteen years ago, business is not receiving. It goes back to landowners, but if it, if it's co-op, private business, it's not that. So, the whole red, to when we understood, and it was surveyed when Prairieland, it was Prairieland at the time, took over. It was surveyed, they put flags out, and I put a fence right down the flags. I, if you wanna give a half to them, fine, but I, I don't think they got that right. Not off and over railroad, but.
Okay.
Can we investigate that, Lance, and make sure that we do our?
Yep, I'd have Darrell look at that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Jessica, I have a question. I don't, I don't remember this now, but doesn't it, it depends on whether the railroad actually purchased the ground or whether they?
Easement, they got so many different.
Yeah, if there's an easement, I think it goes, automatically goes back to, excuse me, landowners. They just took it, whatever, I can't think of the word either.
Imminent domain.
Imminent, yeah.
Domain, I'm like, and that's where they don't buy it, and so it depends on how they received it, how they give it back, but even then, they didn't necessarily follow those rules. Whenever it's railroad, it's quite complicated. So, the one thing I can tell you is if it's a city street, that it's ours if the city ceases to be. So, Taylor's correct, we have the ability to vacate it, and then it's still ours, and we can deed it back however it is that we see fit.
And your other option is to just not vacate that part at all, and it would just stay the way it is.
No, I mean, if it, if that's, if it's a city street and then it's ours, I don't have a problem. And I don't know why I didn't think of asking that question earlier, but I just, no, I'm.
So, the property to the north where that building lays, that is IAS property?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's probably a 10, 12-foot strip between the fence and that building that's.
Okay. And then the other little piece we're talking about's in the south corner.
Yes.
I would think if they were comfortable with the fact that he put up a fence, that you and he doesn't object to it, I would just deed back what's north of the fence.
But I think he wanted half that.
Well, I know he wants more of that for the co-op, but like they've been okay with the fence is what I'm saying, so.
Do you think the fence is on the line, or is it in between?
Prairieland had it surveyed.
Yeah.
And they said this is the line. That's where I put the fence. I, I, there are stakes there, and that's where we set the corners. So.
We can look at it. Yeah, exactly. We can always vacate it and not deed it for a while, like they do every other town, it seems like. So, I guess that'd be the safest course of action now would be to vacate them, and then we'll, we'll look into that when we go to deeding it.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there any more comments? Any other written comments? So, from there, I can ask to close the public hearing.
So, moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is a resolution to vacate select county properties located in Lawn Hill. Approved. Approval of quick claim, oh, no, just that one. Skipping to the next one already.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution to vacate the county roads as presented in Lawn Hill.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
BJ.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is approval of a quick claim deed for previously vacated portion of U Avenue right, right-of-way of located in section 7 and 8 of Union Township.
And, go ahead.
This was our old Level C road, and we vacated the south half mile to West Ferris and the Giles family. So, yeah, we got the deeds ready. I thought, I heard Lance had a question on it.
Yeah, well, I saw the one deed for Giles. I, I guess I didn't see the deed for Ferris.
Right.
Yeah.
Didn't see that either.
I just wanted to be.
I've got.
It probably just says the exact same thing, but opposite.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we had them both.
I have them both.
So, the way I read it is, you know, we're deeding them the, both the 66-foot, and then if you get towards the end, it says accept, and then one will say the east 33 feet, and the other one will say the west 33 feet.
Okay. I'd make a motion to approve both quick claim deeds as presented.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? That was for both quick claim deeds, correct?
Correct.
Donna has a question?
Yes.
So, when this happens, 33 feet, 33 feet, does the 33 feet get added to the adjoining parcel, or does it become a parcel on its own?
Good question for Lori. How do they do that?
The way, the way I've seen it, like when we did Sherman, the parcel just got bigger.
Okay.
We usually put it on there because when they deed it, they'll say the adjoining, they'll say.
Here's your two copies. I'll bring mine for the Ferris one.
Oh.
Okay.
Doesn't become a parcel on its own unless necessary. I can't think of why it would be, but most of the time we just adjoining.
I mean, it kinda, wouldn't it stay as kinda two parcels now, and then when they change, change its hands, or no?
No, we just put them together.
Okay.
If it's the same landowner, there's no need for them to break out their taxes because of this little strip and this one.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call.
BJ.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is an approval of a quick claim deed for previously vacated portion of right-of-way located at intersection County Highway S-62 and U-U Avenue.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the road vacation. Public hearing.
Nope, nope, we're above that one.
Oh, I don't think I have that.
This was our parcel for Brent Perry.
Quick claim deed.
Yeah, this is the triennial.
So, we've had that published.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the quick claim deed with regard to the, the right-of-way located at the intersection of County Highway S-62 and U-U Avenue in section 9 of Union Township.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? This is that little sliver of ground.
Less than acre, wasn't it?
Yeah. On the curve there. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call.
Aye.
BJ.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have is the resolution set date and time for a public hearing on the road vacation select streets and alleys of Cleves.
Same thing when I were heading towards Cleves. We've had that request before too, and we're getting back to it. So, I'd recommend anytime after April 1st.
I'll make a motion to hold the road vacating hearing for the select streets and alleys in Cleves for April 15th at 9:02 a.m.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Yes.
All those little numbers on there, are those separate lots, or is the property?
In block one? Is that what you're looking at?
In, in one of them, actually. King's Edition, King's.
Is that there, okay?
These are the lot numbers.
Taylor, is that okay?
And those are all separate lots?
Correct, yeah, the lines aren't there.
So, do. So, do different individuals own those, or does one person own everything that is red?
It just depends on where the lot lines are. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I mean, if that were a town, all those little green numbers, the little green numbers would be people's yards.
Correct, yeah.
So, are those little green numbers all owned by separate people?
Not necessarily now. A lot of these are combined, like one guy owns all that.
Okay, okay, okay.
I, I think.
Because I see the blue lines, but, eh, okay.
I, I, I think back when they designed the town of Cleves, they plotted it out that way. Might only had one owner at the time, but, but we put streets in. And now we're looking at vacating the, vacating the streets that are in the middle of a field.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
So, and this is happening.
The blue lines are different owners.
I believe so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Those are your parts, the dark, dark blue are your parcel lines. So, where the dark blue is, that's showing one owner.
Okay.
Bob?
So, you vacate those, I mean, just don't maintain them anymore, or they gotta clean them up and?
They can do whatever they want.
Well, no, I mean, if the city owns them, county owns them.
No, the county.
Yeah, when you vacate them, you're pretty much saying that. And then that's our problem, like back in the 70s, they vacated a bunch, but they never deeded them out, so it's just this empty ground here that nobody's in charge of, but there's no taxes either.
Taxes on it. So, until we.
Do they have to clean up the road or anything, or they just leave it, that's just it, or whoever owns it deals with it?
In most cases, there isn't even a road there.
Every situation's different.
It's just dirt.
Yeah.
Like, like I say, you, you can look over to the top right corner, that's a field. Those roads aren't in there. We just have it plotted out that there's roads, they're not paying taxes on that, so we need to vacate the road, which is what we just did in Lawn Hill. And then we'll do the quick claim deeds back to the owners.
But you don't have to do nothing there? You have to clean up nothing?
I, I don't think there's anything there to clean up.
There's, there's no infrastructure there.
It, it was never designed.
You don't know that the road was plotted because it was never developed.
Okay.
So, it exists on paper like this, so it's a piece of ground that's owned by the county, but there's nothing there other than it's a field. It doesn't exist. But we can't tax on it because the person doesn't own it yet.
And a lot of times people want this, like if it's a 60, like maybe the hazes, you know, then they could, you can build something on it now because you own it. So, most times that's where this comes from, is somebody wants the ground so they can put a building on it.
Any other questions? Hearing no more, roll call.
BJ.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is approval of the herbicide agreement.
April 15th.
9:02, large conference room.
So, this is our agreement. Was it two weeks ago, we met with Lou Lorenson of DBI. You know, they, they were, they were one of the two people that turned in a proposal. They were the chiefest. He seemed very knowledgeable, and so per your guys' direction, we're going with where we will spray twice a year for two years to try to get ahead of it. And, you know, I feel like after our conversation, that's the direction we thought is the best course of action for the county. So, this is just an agreement for their labor, and then we shall provide the chemical to them. So, I'm asking, currently asking three local people to supply us with the chemical. We'll go from there.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the herbicide agreement with DBI Services.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next is the approval of manure crossing policy.
So, I showed you guys this another two weeks ago, and the only real change on it is you guys wanted me to put something how they would, we'd like to have two business days, you know, that way they're not showing up and wanting it that day. I'm sure it'll still happen, but it's on our permit, is that, so hopefully that deters that a little bit. I got some comments from Iowa Select. They were asking me to make a lot of guarantees on timing, and I said, "We won't guarantee anything." It might get done that day, it might get done in two days, so I wasn't gonna guarantee them anything. But I, I still told them, I thought, "Everything we did was fair. We didn't change it that much from the way it used to be." So. I think they should be okay.
I'd make a motion to approve the road crossing permit applications for manure application using hoses or pipeline in Hardin County as presented by Engineer Rawl.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I do appreciate the dialogue and that, you know, we could come together and find some compromise and get input, so it was good to have, you know, that dialogue, and I appreciate it.
We do like the hoses. It keeps the trucks off the road. They're a good thing.
So, so they could apply for, for it at any time. They could apply tomorrow for it. They just have to notify you within 48 hours.
Her big, her big question was your expiration date, and I said, "It's gonna be so far out there, it shouldn't be a concern." I told her I'd probably just do it yearly. That way we're not having to do it twice a year.
Okay, and, but they would still notify within 48 hours when they're laying a hose.
Two business days, but we wanted to say that way there, you gotta work on the weekend too. But yeah, that's the plan.
And all they have to do, all they would have to do, they'd have the permit filed. All they would have to do is make a phone call, let it know. Okay. Whether cellphone, or, I mean, is that contact available?
Can be, yeah.
For, like, if, if it's Friday night, and they could be done on Sunday.
Yep, I get my email all the time too, so.
Okay.
I'm not too concerned about it.
Okay. That, that was one of my concerns, because it, it is weather oriented, when they can't get in and out.
That's why, you know, you, you apply early, and then I wouldn't, shouldn't be a problem.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing no more, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is set date and time for the fiscal year 1920 budget amendment.
I'd make a motion setting the April 15th at 9:03 a.m. for the fiscal year 1920 budget amendment.
Or no?
Too early.
No, that's not, that's not enough time to publish.
Okay, I was told anytime.
I didn't get any advice.
No, all right. When, what would you prefer, Jessica?
No, I, not the 15th.
Okay. Uh, the 22nd?
Sure.
Okay.
Sounds lovely.
All right. I'd make a motion setting the time for the fiscal year 1920 budget amendment hearing to be held April 22nd at 9:02 a.m. in the large conference room of the Hardin County Courthouse.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Is that plenty of time for everybody to get theirs in and printed?
You put the hammer down, yes. I, the reason I had you set a date and time for one is because something came up with Lynn's department that he needs to amend his budget. So, I know he would prefer it sooner rather than later.
Would that work for you?
But honestly, we typically do one.
In April, wouldn't we?
In April or early May, trying to wrap everything up, so.
Is that enough time? You'll probably have something on there too.
I was working on it yesterday and today, so.
You'll, you'll be in there?
Yep.
Okay, I didn't know if anybody else had any issues or?
I don't think so. His is the only one I'm aware of.
Okay.
But his is a big one, so.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
BJ.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have is a motion directing payment from Risk Pool Reserves pursuant to Iowa Code Section 331.30111 and 12, and 331.4241A5, and 331.4112B and 8. Darrell, you wanna talk on this at all?
This, this deals with the bill that the county received from the state auditor regarding the audit that was recently completed. And I believe that it should be paid by the Risk Pool because the concerns that brought it to our attention were raised by a pool entity member. And so the audit was done primarily in response to that, and the pool was to benefit from that audit, just to kinda see where things were at. And these code sections, 331, 301, Sub 11, and Sub 12, create or authorize the county to create such a pool. And the other code sections permit the costs and administration of that pool to be paid from the reserves of the pool. And an audit would be related to those costs, and so the code does provide for payment from the pool, and I think since the pool was the reason why it was, when the audit was performed, and they're the ones that are gonna benefit the most from it, it should be paid from the reserve. So, I wanted it done by motion so that the auditor's office here would have then the direction from this board to make that payment, so there wouldn't be any questions as to why it was paid from the pool, so.
Okay, thank you.
I would make a motion directing the payment from the Risk Pool Reserves pursuant to the listed code sections for the state audit bill.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Could I have your motion clarified because the proper name of it is the Public Employees Health Trust.
Okay, so I'll amend my motion to state the Public Employees Health Trust.
The reason being that 30 years from now, when somebody reads an audit and says she was audited because of this pool, and then she writes a check out of it to the same auditing office that audited her, that's kinda weird. So, I would really just love it to have the exact name.
Yeah, that makes sense, thank you.
I need a second.
I'll second that.
So, I'm gonna do a motion on the amendment. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now a motion on the entire motion.
I'll second that, or I'll make the motion to adopt the motion as amended.
But let me back up a bit. We, we're in the motion already. Any discussion on that now?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, no discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next is the auditor's monthly report.
I'd make a motion to accept Auditor Lara's monthly report as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the recorder's monthly report.
I'll make a motion to approve the recorder's monthly report for the month of February.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now I have is Conservation Annual Report.
I'll make a motion to approve the Hardin County Conservation Annual Report.
I'll second.
For the year of January through December of 19.
19. I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now we have is the approval of resignation and request for early retirement benefit of secondary roads. We've had one applicant.
I'd make a motion approving the voluntary early retirement incentive for Jeffrey State effective May 1st, 2020. He's a secondary roads motor greater operator. He's currently working at a rate of $21.92 an hour. He's served since December of 2, of 1992.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? We have two things here in one motion. One was the early retirement for Jeffrey State, and the other one was this change of status.
Okay, right.
So, he just did the.
This change of status.
We need to.
Right, and then, secondly.
Oh.
Sorry, I, okay.
Okay.
So, I, I have a change of status as a motion for secondary roads.
Can I second it?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I still need the approval and resignation request for the early retirement benefit.
I'll make a motion to approve the early retirement incentive policy for the employee.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now I have is a change of status for property management.
I'll make a motion to approve the employee change of status for the hiring of David Corcoran as the assistant to the property manager at an annual salary rate of $34,000. And this will be as of March 16th, or hiring date of March 16th, 2020.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
It does also state that there is a six-month probation period and then a $1,000 increase if all terms are met.
And it's a non-exempt position.
Correct.
Right.
And another discussion?
Donna has a question.
Donna.
The $1,000, is that annually or monthly?
What?
Annually.
Annual, that's salary.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Any public comments? Hearing no public comments. Any other business? I can ask for a German. I can ask for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.